To order, let the record show that a court, my board members present that this meeting has been duly called and a notice that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, we need a motion to certify the agenda. Motion made by Josh.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kyle. All four. Six oh, let the record show that Robert Taylor is not present tonight. Robert has had recturative surgery this morning. Thinking about him. Uh, Leanne. Say it very once.
God bless you, Father. Thank you for allowing us the ability to gather here today. We are just so thankful. And I just ask for all those places they can't do what we are so fortunate to do. There's so much strife right now within, across the world, and I just ask for peace. And I ask as we meet here tonight, everyone in this room, Lord, and by wisdom into our hearts, may knowledge be pleasing to our souls, but your standing guide us in discretion and guard us, and you're my prayer. Amen.
God's there, please, sir.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored to that question.
(Inaudible) Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Alright, tonight we have some special recognitions, several, and we're gonna start, we have a dad's night. I think this year in October was our ninth one. I had to knock off, but it's kind of the same people that we call on every year to do this. And I've asked Alliance Bank, I didn't get in touch with them in time, but Alliance Bank gives us, it costs a lot of money, we usually have about five hundred. We try to, it's called Dad's Night because whenever I was younger and my kids were younger, I would farm things out to my wife and say, you can take them to this and this, but this Dad's Night, we try to encourage the dads to come or a grandparent and have that male influence in those guys' life. But we do it at the elementary and we just have several activities, the football guys come down and do stuff with the kids, so gonna recognize a few people that either give money or give a whole lot of other stuff. So first, Rookshers, come on down here and I'm just gonna give you, we have the kids make some cards, so the kids made some cards, and I deal with Rodney, he's the manager at Rookshers, and what is your name?
Marlena.
Marlena, I'm Erin Sanders.
Nice to meet you.
So, I go in there and I hand them all the time, because when it gets close to time with food, we're just going in there a whole lot, but we have cards for you, and it's kind of got this right here. And also, y'all have helped us in Frito-Lay and Little Debbie, they donated a bunch of stuff, so to feed five hundred people, so you'll get this to Frito-Lay and Little Debbie. Thank you. So Jessica, can we do a picture with?
Absolutely.
Rookshers and the board? We're gonna hold this little card up here. I've had this in the truck for a little while, so I think y'all's little kid could draw it up. Tell us where you want us to get it. Have you got Linda?
I don't have Leanne. I need Leanne.
I'm good.
Still can't see Leanne.
It's good.
I'll just keep moving, y'all stay right there. Yeah, there we are. Okay. Got it.
Thank you. Well, I'm staffing.
I will, thank you.
Eddie? I miss him, but. So Lowe's, they donate a lot of stuff, but they, we might call them and say, hey, can you bring tables and we'll set up as many tables as we can get in there, and they'll have employees come down and bring tables, and then they'll have to come back and get tables on the night shift, so, and then money, and then, I don't know, thinking about, oh, y'all bring just different kinds.
Buy from Rookshers?
Yep, yep, they get, they get Rookshers to, to cook stuff for us, so, and without them, we couldn't do this, so, and Eddie's the one that we call on and he kind of heads it all up, so, we appreciate y'all.
No problem.
On behalf of all of you. You gotta do a job.
Don't have a lot.
How we gonna do this? You got some reds and so.
Get a little round. Got it.
Thank you, man. Appreciate you. You want to talk to us a few more?
Yes, we do.
This time I'll take the opportunity to recognize our staff members for the month. I could have Ms. Carmen Contreras to come down first. She is our Elementary Teacher of the Month. Says Ms. Contreras is a champion for our students because she empowers them to reach their greatest potential by building meaningful relationships, knowing them as individuals, and fostering a positive classroom culture through positive reinforcement and tailored instruction. At the heart of every decision she makes, she considers the needs of her students first. I visited with Ms. Contreras this year and she said, we have a problem, I have not been able to find another, or excuse me, she said that. Phil said that, said, we have a problem, I haven't been able to find another bilingual teacher, without hesitation, she said, I will do what's best for the students. And she continues to put students first every day. Ms. Contreras juggles teaching both third and fourth grade Spanish language arts and English language arts, science and social studies without complaint. Through proven practices, she ensures high levels of learning, social emotional development, and achievement for all students. She adapts lessons to meet the individual needs of her students and various activities to increase student engagement. For some lessons, she completes total room transformations. Who would not want to be a student in this classroom with positive, authentic learning? Her students consistently perform at high levels and she encourages them to develop a growth mindset and motivates them to persevere in the face of adversity. Through student goal settings, her students see their work as a purpose and take ownership of their learning. Ms. Contreras's dedication is unmatched, she is often the first to arrive at school in the wee hours of the morning and the last to leave. She continues to grow professionally and seeks training to help improve student outcomes in bilingual education. She serves as a collaborative team leader for our fourth grade team and the entire elementary campus. We appreciate her willingness to serve our students, colleagues, and parents. She is a difference maker, Ms. Carmen Contreras. You wanna say anything?
Well, I couldn't do this without my team, and I wish my team was here, but it really just takes a whole team to get to where I am. I mean, my fourth grade team and my third grade team are awesome, and without their help or support, I couldn't do what I'm doing right now. And of course, my admin too, I mean, they're just great people that I love to work for, so I just couldn't do it without the whole school, because it really does take the whole school to make it happen.
Next, our Middle School Teacher of the Month for November is Ms. Rochelle Palmer. Says Ms. Palmer is our amazing fifth grade math teacher at the middle school. She has been in education for thirteen years, starting as a paraprofessional for five years, and now a teacher for eight years. This is her second year with Mount Vernon Middle School. Ms. Palmer comes each day with a desire for success and is willing to assist wherever there is a need. She is timely, dependable, positive, and up for every challenge presented to her. She works diligently to prepare stimulating lessons that address the many learning styles of her students while motivating and challenging students to reach and attain higher expectations. Ms. Palmer is deliberate in maintaining a structured and friendly classroom. Each day, she has a detailed lesson plan to ensure she covers every skill the students must to learn and works to find different avenues to participate or practice the concepts presented. Consistent and quiet patience come to mind when describing Ms. Palmer. She establishes a daily routine in all of her classes that enhances the learning environment for all of her students, while at the same time varying her activities to ensure success for all learners. We are very blessed to have Ms. Palmer as valuable team member of the Mount Vernon Middle School family. Ms. Palmer.
Um, I don't think.
Okay. We won't put you on the spot.
Thank you.
And let's see. Mr. Palmer?
He is not, he was not gonna be able to.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm gonna read this, our high school teacher of the month is Sam Varon. Says, we're excited to recognize Mr. Varon as the Teacher of the Month from Mount Vernon High School, and only his first year with our high school, Mr. Varon has made an immediate impact on both students and colleagues. Mr. Varon has a contagious positive attitude and disposition with everyone he comes into contact with. His dedication to teaching his Spanish two classes is truly admirable. He creates an engaging and comprehensive learning environment and strives to captivate his students' interest. His teaching methods incorporate a variety of resources, making the language learning experience not only educational, but also enjoyable. He displays daily a genuine enthusiasm for teaching, learning, and student success. Beyond the classroom, he goes the extra mile and has been the first one to volunteer for almost any extra duties that are necessary. He has served as a homebound teacher, worked Saturday School, and taught freshman Friday tutorials, to name a few. His approachability, patience, and commitment to student success have already established him as a respected educator in our school community. Mr. Varon's immediate contributions to our school make him a very deserving choice for Teacher of the Month. We are extremely fortunate to have him as part of Mount Vernon High School, look forward to great things he will accomplish moving forward, and we will give him his acknowledgement as well. So, Sam Varon. And now, our Campus Support of the Month nominee is Ms. Donna Trantham. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Says, let me spotlight Mount Vernon Elementary, one and only Donna Trantham. She is an icon at Mount Vernon Elementary School, and even though she has been with us for a long time, she still has the tenacity of a teenager. Nice, how about that? Ms. Trantham provides timely, individualized intervention to our striving students in reading and math. She is, she has a gift for connecting with students with the most challenging academic behavioral needs. She takes her students under her wing and oftentimes becomes their safe place. In addition, she demonstrates excellence every day along with a heart of serving our students. In fact, Ms. Trantham is the best lunch duty monitor to every work at Mount Vernon. She is the perfect example of how to not only monitor students and help with a smile, but she has fished out at least three retainers and countless teeth from the trash can. To put it simply, there is nothing that Ms. Trantham would not do for our kids. She's all, she always offers to help and goes above and beyond the expectations. Mount Vernon Elementary School is blessed by Donna's hard work and willingness to serve. She is a difference maker. So, our Campus Support of the Month nominee. Very good, wanna say anything?
Thank you for nominating me, and it's, my admin makes it so easy to work with, and I love watching the kids, once they get it, their little light bulbs come on and they get excited, so that's why I do it.
Very good, we're glad you're here. We have one more, we don't get to give this one out very often, or we don't give it out very often, but we have the opportunity tonight to give out kind of a certificate of appreciation kind of for one of our staff members that's really kind of gone over and above that extra mile, and this actually came from a community member. And Ms. Nancy Craig, who helps with the Mount Vernon Rotary Club and the backpack program in which they help provide, how many meals, how many backpacks are we doing?
Doing eight hundred and seventy-five a week.
They do, they stuff eight hundred and seventy-five backpacks a week, so, and do that on Tuesdays.
Tuesdays, and they go out to elementary and middle school on Thursdays.
So on Tuesdays at what time?
Ten thirty.
I'm trying to recruit for you. Tuesdays at ten thirty, back here in the old childhood building across from the softball field, if you are available at that time and would like to be a part of that, that is a great ministry and a great opportunity, and again, eight hundred, how many?
Eight hundred and seventy-five.
Eight hundred and seventy-five backpacks that they, that they put food in that is to go home with our students over the weekend. And even for when we went to the four-day school week, so there's an extra day on the weekends, they provided meal for that as well. They had some great help and some great donors and people who stepped up, and they make it happen. And so, a great organization, a great cause, but she took the opportunity to nominate one of our own, one of our own persons here from our maintenance department, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Chris Tenny to come down, please. So this is what Ms. Craig had to say about, about Chris. Says, I would like to nominate the Mount Vernon I S D employee, Chris Tenny, from the A.C. Heating Department, as an Employee of the Month who goes the extra mile. Our Rotary Backpack Program is in full swing for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We are now packing each week, six meals each weekend due to the four-day school week for a hundred and forty-five students, and so therefore that's eight hundred and seventy meals a week. More students are added each week too with community and school involvement and coordination. Rotary orders food from both the East Texas Food Bank and from Sam's Clubs with large deliveries almost every week. Large, heavy boxes are delivered by FedEx, and Chris has participated in streamlining our delivery methods as part of the process improvement for real-time inventory and food storage, simply because his office nearby where we pack meals. Chris believes in our wonderful backpack program and willingly at times even helps the FedEx delivery man to carry heavy boxes into the building, thus reducing the incidence of theft or weather-induced harm. Could you come to that, my house, since FedEx man is in my house a lot as well, Chris? Chris has become a very vital team member with other volunteers for this blessed donation program for elementary and middle school students. Our motto is, no child should be hungry when going to school in Mount Vernon, Texas. Thanks to generous donors, the Mount Vernon Rotary Club, and faithful volunteers, including Chris. Thank you for your consideration for honoring Chris, not only an honoring volunteer to our program, but as a Mount Vernon I S D employee in kind regards, Nancy Craig, Mount Vernon Rotary Club. So congratulations. Ms. Nancy, come up here, let's get a picture with, with Chris as well. Do you wanna say anything while you're up here? Are you sure?
I'm sure.
Thank you, thank you. And thanks to the school for letting you do it.
Absolutely, we appreciate what you do. Very good, so if you'll hang here, our Teacher of the Month, if y'all come back up, we'll get one group photo as well.
Dr. McGolick, what time was that again? Did they do?
Ten thirty, ten thirty on, on Tuesdays.
Anyone's welcome.
They would love to have some more help.
Ms. Craig, and you probably said it, I heard Robert go ahead and page for this.
We, our Rotary, chips in a lot of money, and we have donors that are very committed to the program, and recently this year, we've received some grant money from Sam, which is also supporting. Y'all all know the price of groceries.
Yeah. Eight hundred and seventy-five, kind of whatever it costs for a backpack, it's pretty, pretty good. Thank you.
Teachers, if you'll come up, we'll get a group picture with the board here real quick. We're gonna jump slide all the way over.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you all.
Eddie, did you, I forgot, is there anything that you wanted to say or share before you need to get back to work?
I appreciate y'all allowing to help out. I enjoy it, blessed to work for a company that allowed me to do it, so, yeah, anytime you need something, let me know.
Yes, sir. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Y'all helped a lot of stuff, we appreciate you.
No problem.
Thank you, Rob. Alright, Campus Department Updates. You guys ready? You guys ready? You're in the dark.
Well, I love getting to hear about all the great things that our staff is doing here at the school, and I have a few more things that I wanted to start out with and share about some teachers on our campus. I always say, you know, the best staff is at Mount Vernon Elementary, and I really truly believe it, but we really do have some teachers that are committed to doing whatever it takes to support our students. So, we have a new teacher, Ms. McMahon, that is a pre-K teacher, and she has a student in her classroom that has been having a lot of difficulty on the bus, you know, regulating his behavior. And so, she offered to ride the bus route home to teach and reinforce positive behaviors on the bus. And so, I just wanted to share that with you and tell you, you know, how much we appreciate her being solution-oriented and just really just going the extra mile for our kids. We also had three teachers, Ms. Broke, Ms. Reese, Ms. Booth, and then Ms. Longer, counselor, attend a PACS training at Region Eight, and what that is, is it's based on trauma-informed practices, evidence-based behavioral strategies, and it works to help children develop self-regulation. And so, they sought that out themselves and went, but the thing is, is they had to, before they could even go to the training, they had to complete six additional hours on their own time. And so, I also wanted to share that, that just shows their commitment to our kids. And also, I wanted to, I wanted to just let you know, Bobby Thompson, we, we're just so thankful for him. He is a problem solver, he is.
He's out solving problems.
He's solving problems. He's an out-of-the-box thinker, and when it comes to meeting our needs, our students' needs, like, he's always there to, to help and try to offer solutions, so, just wanted to highlight those individuals. For our attendance, we have shown a decrease of one percent, so we are at the elementary at ninety-six percent. We've had, you know, some viruses and some sickness lately. So, the campus leadership, we were offered a scholarship to attend a flagship training at Capturing Kids' Hearts. And let me just tell you, it was such an empowering, empowering experience. We've got to visit with several administrators of inner-city New Orleans schools and see the positive effects that it has had and how it's working on their campuses, so, that was, that was really enlightening. You know, it's not a program, but it's a process to totally shift the culture and the mindset of everyone, and, you know, it, it can not only be used in classrooms, but in staff meetings, in athletic programs, on the bus route, in the cafeteria, and it's just really designed to impact the overall school community. We know, everybody in here knows that teachers face so many challenges every day, the bar is set so high for them to increase student achievement, but our kids also come to school with different problems and different issues, and so, we're, we're competing against the social and environmental and outside pressures. And so, what Capturing Kids' Hearts, what it does, is it helps strengthen the relationships between staff and students, but staff and staff, staff and parents, and just the whole school community. And so, we at the elementary are really, really excited about implementing that next year, and, and we're looking forward to, you know, strengthening our relationships and reducing, you know, the behaviors that teachers are talking about that are, are keeping their kids from learning. I was a little late getting here today because we had a Title I meeting, so, we had our Title I meeting tonight, and we also have Turkey Bowl going on tonight, Turkey Trot tomorrow, and then we have our Class Dojo Day on Wednesday, which our students, that's our Positive Behavior Intervention Support, so students are earning Dojo points, and so, we're, those that have cashed in, we're gonna serve cotton candy at recess. For our Student Achievement Goals, we're still monitoring our CUAs and working to maintain and grow our student performance. Professional Development, the last one, I know I talked about our teachers, we did staff-led breakout sessions, and so, we sent a survey out to kind of get feedback from teachers, and overall, it was very positive. Our teachers-led training in ediforia, small group stations, instruction, classroom management, calm-down centers, integrating technology into the classroom, and the testing platform. And so, they, they really felt like the learning was purposeful, and so, many of them really expressed a desire to want to lead additional trainings in the future, so it's really great, you know, building that capacity in our teachers.
Ms. Bailey got the middle school?
I got it. I don't know how well I got it, but I got it. Okay, so I'm not as long-winded as all does right here, but I'm gonna highlight a few things that are going on in the middle school, there are a lot of amazing things. We recently celebrated Rutherford Week, we had a Be Kind, Share Mind, Live Drunk Free poster contest, coin contest, we had a hundred and fifteen contestants, and it was amazing. If y'all get a chance to go to the middle school cafeteria, they are posted and they are, it's wonderful. Last week, our fifth graders, they received a second six-week, six-weeks attendance trophy. They had not, almost ninety-seven percent, they actually won the first six weeks with ninety-seven percent, or ninety-eight percent, kind of like elementary, ours dropped to a percent, one percent, based on that nice little stomach bug we've had floating around. Let's see, what else? Also, our fifth graders had a Veterans Day card contest, and the cards they made were delivered to our local veterans here. We recently held our second six-weeks Positive Behavior Party, we had roughly ninety-six percent of our students able to attend that, based on their great behavior for that whole entire six weeks. Our UIL students and their event coaches are, they've been super busy with practices. We've got a meet coming up in December, December twelfth. High school kids, they're still rocking football, but we have started basketball season. Our girls have one game under the belt, and boys start Thursday, so we are excited to see that. Our staff is looking forward to our Fall Feast, that's gonna be put on our PTO, I'm kind of excited, that's gonna be Wednesday, so, let's see. Oh, okay, so I am a needy person, very needy, and I always go to Facebook when I need something. And we recently asked for donations for our cafeteria, we've gotten some board games, card games, we've gotten some additional equipment for our playgrounds that I'm really excited about, and they were all donated by parents. They were excited about getting it, they've donated old stuff that they had, they weren't using anymore, new stuff, we did an Amazon list, and they have been, it's like Christmas every day at the middle school, because we're getting some really cool stuff, and the kids love it, they are, they are loving it. Snacks, so the other day on Facebook, if anyone's friends with me on Facebook, I put on there, I don't have kids personally, so I don't know what it's like feeding kids, but they come to my office every day needing a snack because they're starving. I said, guys, if you have any middle school kids and you wanna send me snacks, please. Monday, today, my, I'm not even joking, it was like the grocery store was coming through. Parents were ringing bags of snacks to put in my closet for them to eat throughout the day. It's amazing, so. Also, our teachers, they're pretty competitive, so we've been doing a few monthly contests. This past month, we had a contest called Pumpkin in Your Pocket, and that's kind of like whoever has the pumpkin at the end of the day wins, and it is cutthroat, like it is, we, this next one we've got coming up, we've had to cut some new rules, so, we have a lot of cheaters in middle school, adults anyways. So we've certainly been blessed with many donations and incentives by our amazing businesses and community members. Also too, like Desiree said, we have to rag on our middle school teachers, they have been playing catch-up with a lot of students that have been out with the bug. I typically leave about five-thirty or six, six-fifteen, and there are still plenty, plenty of cars in the parking lot, they're working on getting stuff caught up and contacting parents, and I've seen parent conferences going on at five o'clock, so, we're pretty proud of our, our teachers, so, it's all good.
Thank you, bye.
Campus.
I'm gonna try to cut this down.
Y'all giving cotton candy out?
No, we're not giving cotton candy out, you know, she was talking about giving them cotton candy, I'm like, you don't want them on the Positive Behavior list the next time you get, because they're gonna be wired this way till Sunday. But we got a lot of stuff going on at the high school, so I will try to, and I, and I cut it down, I always joke, how long do you want me to go, because I don't mind talking, I'll talk the painting off the wall, but, but we do have a lot of stuff going on, so I'm gonna try to cut it down. I'm gonna start with, you know, what we got going on with our students and stuff, and our National Honor Society went to a conference at, at Mount Pleasant, and it, with their NHS program that they hosted, so they attended various lectures, just focused on character, civic duty, community service, and the importance of continuing education, and, and what to do with that, so, our, I was talking to Ms. Hunt about that, Ms. Hunt took them over there, and, you know, she really thought they got a lot out of that, our NHS members. And then, and I don't know if you guys know about this, because some of the stuff that I was looking at, we've had a board meeting, so I didn't know whether to include it or not, if Mr. Glover included it or not, some of this, but Ms. Stevens, Ms. Russell, they organized a trip to Region Eight called Paving the Way, and Region Eight hosted it, it's for eleventh and twelfth graders, and it was specifically for students to receive any kind of special services, five or four, special education, and it was, they received a lot of information about what's available through Texas Workforce, when they graduate, before they graduate, once they go to college, different career paths, planning services, really good stuff, they, they said they felt like they got a lot out of that also. Ms. Stevens, again, and Ms. Trantham are, are. Ms. Stevens, again, and Ms. Treatham are, are a CIS person, um, and Mi- Mr. Solo, Mr. Sol Rosano, they took seventy-eight students to NTCC for a, a college fair. So that was, they came back exhausted and just bags of stuff, you know, for different colleges and got some good in, good information. Um, so that was a lot of them to go and they said everybody was awesome and, and just asked good questions and, uh, that was some good stuff. Uh, we did participate in freshman week this, last week and, uh, we had someone here from, uh, Just Say Yes, Clarence Lee, and he gave a presentation to our whole high school, um, that encouraged students to make healthy choices and healthy decisions and looked at how those affect you in the future, you know, kind of how the decisions you're making right now affect you down the road. So that was good and the guy, uh, commanded a lot of, a lot of attention to him. He had a good story. He was a, a kid that would sneak into the Florida State weight room and lift weights at night. Well, he got, you know, he started talking to some people that I knew, you know, he used to play a little ball, maybe not much in high school and, well, they encouraged him to try to go walk on and do and this and that. And unbeknownst to him, Bobby Bowden had been watching him on, on the cameras and was, you know, hey, we want you to try out. So he made the team and, you know, played a little bit and lead, you know, just a good, good story of kind of seizing the moment, seizing opportunities. He said, I would encourage you to go break into places and sneak, sneak into places, but, you know, uh, but that was, that was really pretty good. Uh, our students have taken the ASVAB test, uh, they received their scores and the interpretations of those. I believe that was last week that they met with them and, and, you know, just helped them, uh, lay plans for what their interest is, what their aptitude is, you know. And all students, they don't have to, you know, obviously, but whether they're going into the military or not, it's good for them to take that, just kind of see what their talents lie. Um, let's see, uh, United States Air Force and Army came and they gave presentations to our students, uh, that are interested in the Air Force Academy, in enlistment or even careers, you know, during enlistment and after, as well as what kind of ROTC programs were out there at some, some of these colleges and schools. So, um, that was, you know, some good information for them. Uh, we've given the PSAT for this school year, um, so we've got that in the books and we're kind of waiting. And I don't know if anybody knows about this, uh, but we did receive, um, some information a week or so ago that from, because I don't know if you know this, but it takes a while for them to get everybody tested and look at the scores and see how they do, but some students that took the test last year, uh, received special recognition for their scores, some of our students. And that's Ruby Tovar, uh, Abigail Bentley, Lexi Gaddis, and Savannah Maxton. They were, received special recognition for their scores. Don't ask me what their scores are, because I don't know. Uh, but, you know, that's a big deal, you know, uh, that's a big deal. Uh, our interact club, that Ms. Stevens heads up, they had a guest speaker here last week, uh, Miss Cindy Stansel, and she spoke to our interact members both lunches about just stress management, time management, um, and gave them ideas of how to cope with that, how to, how to manage that in their time and, you know, because sometimes all of us, even, even students, uh, and adults, we have some issues with time, time management, you know, and whatnot. So I thought that was good for those students to, you know, moving forward in their high school and college careers as well as, you know, just being, being an adult. Um, that's just some of the stuff and I left a lot of stuff off. I mean, we got a lot going on here. Um, sports and, and things like that, other activities, extracurricular stuff. As you know, we finished up cross, cross country. We had two students qualify for, um, regionals back on twenty-third of October in, in Grand Prairie. Uh, they, they competed, they didn't, you know, it didn't work out the way they wanted it, but sometimes, you know, things, things happened that was, uh, as in Norwood and Mika Johnson. Um, so, you know, they'll gear up for track and other sports. Uh, volleyball just finished up. I don't know if anybody went to that, um, Queen City volleyball game that we wasn't supposed to win, but that was something else. That was good stuff. That was first round game, so. Uh, they went to the area round and they had, had a good season, they had ups and downs all the way, those of you that, uh, follow them, but they really did a good job. Basketball's rolling, got a game tomorrow night if anybody wants to go. Uh, here, play Satello, JV starts at four-thirty and then varsity, they're following, the girls are one and one. Um, yeah, I believe they beat up on Paul Puett pretty good last week and then, you know, didn't work out Saturday with Long, Longview here and then they'll go to Queen City this weekend to play a tournament, uh, the, the varsity will. I don't know if JV's invited to that, but that's in full swing. Foot, football's still rolling along there. We're going around too, gonna go to Little, Little Rose Stadium Friday night and see what we can do against Malikoff. And, uh, that game starts at seven-thirty for anybody who's been living under a rock and don't, don't really know about it. Um, and then our, our, our ag, our FFA, our ag students, the, uh, LDE, uh, teams, this is what I've been told, uh, we had, they advanced to area and we had the, the Greenhead creed speaking and the Greenhand Spanish Creed, they both received first place. Their recent competition, second place for the, uh, agricultural issue forum, and then third place in, uh, FFA broadcasting, Greenhand, uh, conducting job interview and Greenhand skills. So it sounded like we just went over there and took every bit of ribbon hardware trophy that they had. Uh, we, you know, Titus County Fair, uh, dang, what was that? That was a few weeks back, but we had some students.
End of September.
End of September. We had some students that went over there, took a lot of blue ribbons away and some second, third place ribbons. Um, I'm gonna mention them, Emily Mendez, mixed media landscapes, first place, mixed media abstract, first place. Uh, so she went over there and entered and if y'all, if y'all leave out or go on break, they're in the, some of her in the trophy case here. Uh, Raylee Holliman, first place, creative arts. Uh, Emily Casbo, first place, mixed media fantasy. Uh, Jay Simpson, uh, second place, acrylic animal. Uh, Natalie Finley, first place, graphic steel life. And then Addison Dunlop, honorable mention in digital portrait, in third place in acrylic portrait. Ethan Nance, first place color steel life photography. And then, uh, Alani Diaz, best-in-class colored pencil fantasy. So I, you, somebody was looking around. So, I mean, that's all, that's not a lot of kids, but a lot of hardware that went, went over there at Titus County Fair competing against all kinds of other students. So that's, that's good, that's good stuff. Um, we still continue to, uh, to develop our staff and do things. We, we call our staff development days, we call them blue, blue days, because on calendar they're blue, you know. What are we gonna do for blue day? So our most recent one, um, our core teachers work with Region Eight to, uh, on their writing strategies across curriculum, no matter if you're in a math class or, you know, all of our core teachers emphasize in reaching the special pop, popular, you know, students that may have some difficulties and don't have that exposure. Uh, our CTE teachers, while our core teachers were doing that, they were working with a Region Eight consultant to learn about, uh, how to include, uh, all includes the special combinations, making sure in all of their CTE programs that we're reaching as many students as we can and, uh, including them, you know, as well as, uh, another part of the day, they looked at, uh, industry-based cer- certifications and how important they are to our school and, and, and how it relates to our, our accountability scores and anything else, just putting kids out there with skills, they can go do something, you know. I mean, just quite simply put, as well as what it does for our numbers and our scores here. Uh, attendance, just like other campuses, we've fallen off, um, about, almost right at two percent for the first six weeks to the second six weeks. Um, there has been a lot of sickness and stuff and, you know, um, sometimes it kind of, they kind of get in that rhythm too. We, our, our kids are doing multitude of things, you know. The same kids that are going on all these field trips are also playing on Friday night or, you know, going to cross-country meets. So some of them, you know, I'm not saying they take days off on purpose, but some of them, you know, they just get tired and, and we've had a lot of sicknesses. I think we had, we had a lot of staff members out today. Uh, but for the year, we're still at ninety-five percent. So my goal's always ninety-seven, knowing I won't ever get there. Um, we started to make up hours for some of the students and I'm gonna tell you, from years past, the list at this juncture is not as long and the amount of hours is not as many for the ones that do fall on it. So, uh, there are a lot of positives with that and we're, we're not missing as much. Uh, and we've really started looking at this and we challenged our teachers and, uh, not that we harped on it, okay, but we've challenged it, teacher attendance, because that's a big deal, because if our teachers are not here, then they're not teaching and they're not instructing, right? So the first six weeks, we had twenty-six teachers or staff members that did not miss a day, other than a school-related deal. Uh, so that's pretty awesome. Uh, the second six weeks, we had sixteen, so it, it dropped off, you know, but ten of those were repeats from the first six weeks. So, uh, and Ms., uh, Ms. Wilkins has helped us with this and, and so each six weeks, they get a little goody tree, you know, um, and so the repeats will get something a little bit bigger this time and then we'll see last man standing, so to speak, on, uh, on, at the end of the, end of the semester, whenever we do, uh, get out, you know, if we still have a whole bunch, we'll get some really, really good prizes. You know, we'll reward everybody for the third six weeks, but our ones that haven't missed at all, then they get entered in a drawing. If it's a handful, then we'll do, you know, we'll get them each something, but, you know, let them know that we know and we see, hey, y'all, y'all come to work, you know? Because that old, that old snooze is pretty easy to hit sometimes or, I'm not, I'm not feeling it today, but if anybody wants to know, I've got a list of folks, if y'all just want to tell them, hey, I appreciate you being here. Um, and I'm not gonna get into Ms. Stevens' counselor quarterly review, but I've got that if anybody wants to see it, because y'all are probably tired of hearing me talk up here. But anyway, we got a lot of stuff going on and a lot of stuff yesterday. Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna follow up with what the principals has said, just to kind of, just kind of do a shout-out to our staff and, and our district. As you saw, we honored some teachers here today, some staff members who do some great things and I was gonna say, I'm, I'm proud of our staff, proud of our students and their performance. Um, kind of what remember as, that I take a look even in regard to, to surrounding districts, um, you know, Chapel Hill, Rivercrest, Compton, Pickens, Wentzboro, Mount Pleasant, Silver Springs, you know, as a district with a rate, with an A rating, we're right there, um, doing some great work. Again, we've got some great kids and great staff and, uh, with an A rating sitting there, comparable to those districts as well. All those districts you mentioned, either A or B, uh, but sit there as an A district shows you the hard work that our, that our staff and our students are putting in every day, uh, to make sure that, that we're, that we're performing and growing. And, uh, we're continuing to, to grow these days, but we have areas that we need to grow and we're working on it. As you heard principals talk, the different things that professional development, that they're working with their teachers and their staff and, um, and we work to get better each day, so just wanted to share that.
Let me clarify, Mount Vernon has the highest, A is as high as we can go.
Correct.
And our current rating.
Is a A.
District is a A.
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome.
Yes, ma'am. Um, also, we're gonna move to information items, which President.
Yeah, just a, right quick. So thinking about this, looking at all this, having Desiree, hey, if y'all will get on the intercom before this is over, since it's Thanksgiving, and just tell your people and your kids thanks. You know, I go, I visit schools just about every day during the week and that's one thing I talk to them about is, it's hard to get teachers and people to clean up pee in the bathroom and Chris is probably out, you know, doing what they do. And cafeteria workers, tell those people thanks for us. And we try to do what we can, but tell them, get on the intercom and tell them thank you and tell the kids how much we appreciate you, please. Thanks.
Give me just a second, sorry, my computer just decided to go, to go haywire on me.
We're going to the information items forward.
Correct.
So this time, I'm gonna go to information items here.
Well.
Hey, and also, some of our, um, tablets, our, our board book is a little bit different here, but if you look up there where it says view, if it says annotate, it won't let you scroll up and down sometimes, so you have to put it on in.
View.
View?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, click on view, because if it's on annotate, it won't let you scroll.
Give me just a second, let me log back in here, please, sir.
Board book is, I don't know how many pages there are to it this time. A short one's about two hundred probably, so if you can't scroll, it's kind of, I see.
We look on yours. So our enrollment totals, excuse me, we're currently at fifteen sixty-two, which is down seven students from, from October first, um, about fifteen students less from, fourteen students less from where we were last year. Uh, as you heard, attendance is, is holding pretty good, um, so we continue to keep our attendance, uh, kind of up, that will, that will help us tremendously. Um, other piece of information items, we have a street landmark firm, Helles.
Yes, sir.
Gonna give us a little update in regard to our sporting facilities and then what they're working for us.
Sure. So we've started, uh, construction at baseball, softball, tennis, which is the dirt work over there to the south of the stadium. Dirt work is basically done, so we will have guys in there, starting Monday next week, the twentieth, getting fields going, getting the concrete curbs in, getting the fence posts in, the collector drain in, um, so it'll, they'll start to look like fields. Um, as far as the whole grand scheme of things for phases two and three, meaning not only baseball, softball, tennis, but the stadium improvements, we're talking about basically three main deadlines. We've got start of baseball season, we've got graduation, and we've got first football game of next year. So where we'll be by the first baseball game, which I believe is February twelfth, we will have the fields completely done, we will have the tennis slab poured and the, and the fence up, we will have, um, the dugouts in, basically everything for baseball, softball, tennis complete, minus the restroom and concession building for baseball, softball, and surfacing slab for tennis. We'll hold off on surfacing until the spring when it warms back up. Um, as far as the stadium improvements, by graduation, we will have the current visitor bleachers demoed. Um, we will have the foundations for the new buildings, uh, that go under the new bleachers in and the utilities roughed in, so by graduation, you will have your new home bleachers and press box. You will leave the existing restroom concession building at the north end of the stadium, so you'll have those facilities for graduation. And then after graduation, we will immediately tear that down, go vertical on that building and the buildings under the new bleachers, restrooms and concessions and ticket booth.
Did you say restroom? Would it, for the baseball fields, would it be done by?
Yes, sir.
By the twelfth?
Foundation will be in, utilities roughed in, but not, not.
Okay. So guess they'll go to the gym?
We'll have those available. And if we need to, we'll have the conversation in regard if we need to bring some, some portables over there.
Some touch.
Closure as well. Yes. Concession, we can do the same thing, concession will be open at the gym, a little out of the way, but we will have, we'll be able to have concession there as well.
And we won't have stands for the baseball, right, for a little while?
We're, we're pushing. Right now, they've promised us the delivery date of January twenty-ninth and that was expedited from what it was previously. Install's gonna be roughly three weeks, hopefully less than that, so that would put us right at mid-February, right at first game. So we're still pushing as hard as we can to try to get them to bump that up even before January twenty-ninth. But, yeah, I mean, worst-case scenario, we're talking about potentially having to move a game or two. So it's, it's gonna be tight. Everything else will be done, it's just the bleachers and press box, it's gonna be.
So what we have to, we're, we're preparing the current baseball, softball field if we need to for, we have to have a home game or two that, that field's not ready, as well as if the bleachers are pushed back for some other reason, something unforeseen to Helles, uh, we can bring in some temporary to provide some stands there. And there's also moving chairs seating as well, which I know a lot of people like setting chairs as well, so, yeah.
And, um, the old press box, what's the story on that?
That'll be, it'll be sometime between now and start of football season next year.
I just had people ask, is it gonna be there or not? So I was gonna just, for the record, let them know.
We will probably just.
Taking it down, right?
Yes, sir, yeah, it'll be taken down. We'll probably just go ahead and demo it when we demo the existing bleachers on the visitor side, so by graduation, it should be gone. Can be sitting on your dillies.
That's what they say, probably one thirty.
Kind of scary getting in that. If you take it down, you get the walls with it. You get all the walls with it.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
Any questions for, for Helles?
Kyle, you don't really know something?
At least so.
Down.
You're in.
Hey, thanks for what you're doing, thanks for the work y'all are putting in. We're glad, we're glad to see it. The turf has been great this year for sure.
Thank you guys for having us. Just trying to be good stewards while we're here, so.
How many turf projects, you, you're overseeing this, right? How many of these projects have you done in the last few years?
Oh, really not that many. I've only been with Helles a couple of years, but I did, uh, West Ruska ISD, I've done several for Kilgore ISD, I did one back in January for the Nissan Titans, we did, I mean, the Tennessee Titans, we did Nissan Stadium for them. Um, and now I'm here with you. We did Nissan Stadium for them. And now I'm here with you guys. It's my favorite one yet. That field is, is beautiful. Purple and white and gray is hard to beat, so. But Helles in general, I mean, we do probably ninety percent of K through twelve in Texas, and we're all over the country. We do hundreds of these every year, so. In addition to tracks and tennis facilities and all that fun stuff. So we're everywhere.
I'd have to say, if you're bigger, so I wouldn't say if you still had that on your mind or not. Is the color, do you just like the color?
Yeah, that field is flawless. It's, it's beautiful. So when we get those new bleachers and press box up, it's gonna look even better. So be a premier facility for sure.
Okay. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. That's your construction update. So we'll move on to item five, open forum for public comment. Now, Dr. McCullough's gonna read something here.
And let me start off and apologize before I haven't read this, and I should have been reading this because this has information that might would solve some things. So I apologize for not reading this. And it somewhat doesn't have all the answers on there, but when we get down to the last paragraph and stuff. So let Dr. McCullough read that, cause he's probably got more clarity than I do.
I said, we do currently have one person who has signed up for public participation. Are there any others? Okay. All right. So I think we have it up on the screen as well, if you can see it, but I'll, I'll read them. So I begin the open forum of the meeting with a few remarks to clarify what is appropriate and inappropriate public comments. Member of the NAST board policies with law of the school district and the board of trustees will follow the law. Policy BDD local governs the public comment portion of this meeting. Audience participation is limited to the public comments portion of the meeting. At all other times, the audience shall not attempt to enter discussion, debate, or ask questions on matters being considered by the board. At regular meetings, the board permits public comments relating to the district, regardless of whether the topic is on an agenda item. At special meetings, the board limits public for comment to agenda items. Individuals who won't participate in public comments must sign up and indicate their topic of choice before the meeting begins. If you have not signed up already, then you will not be permitted to speak in tonight's meeting. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. If you require the assistance of a translator to the English language, you will receive twice the amount of time if you are speaking on an agenda topic. Board policy allows me to adjust the amount of time for public comments when necessary for effective meeting management or to accommodate larger numbers of individuals wishing to address the board. On agenda topics, each person is allowed to speak individually. Do not expect to debate with the board or individual trustees. Public comments cannot be used to discuss a specific complaint or grievance. For example, if a parent has a specific complaint regarding the student, a decision relating to a student, or against specific school personnel, then that complaint must go through the process of board policy FEG local. Employee complaints regarding their own work or other employees must go through the process of board policy DGBA local. These topics cannot be discussed in the public comment form of a board meeting. Anyone who violates this policy will be given one warning. If the speaker violates this policy a second time, then that speaker's time will immediately end. Refusal to abide by this policy may result in the speaker's removal from the board meeting. Thank you in advance for following the policy of the Mount Vernon High School.
And I should have been reading that in every board meeting, whether we had, you know, if we have a speaker, and I apologize for that. And I hasn't mentioned this back when we hired a coach at one time, that we had some speakers in here. I just ask that you don't. It hurts my heart to have to change direction. So if I have to call you out, I don't want to, I promise you. So if I have to stop you and redirect or whatever, just know that that, I live with that for a while. And I think about that. I think about, you know, in this position, how do I get this right? How do I get, keep the school in, in a respectful position? And how do I not put other board members? That's the last thing I want to do, is put any of you in a, in a spot to where we have to, have to think about things. So, and that's just what if you're, if you ever speak. So Ms. Young, you're gonna be our speaker for tonight. You know, I just ask that, no, you don't put me in that spot. We did give five minutes. If we have a whole lot, we might knock it down. But we'll, Dr. McCullough have a timer right here. So it's hard for me to say, hey, stops, and we just let you look at it, and you know you need to speed up. So are you, Ms. Young?
Aye.
Okay. You'll come up here to our podium when we have a speaker to pick you up? Tiffany Young. So when you get ready to start, are you gonna start?
Awesome. I'm ready. My name is Tiffany Young. I am a mom and one of our band students here at the high school. I'm here today speaking to you on behalf of many of our band students. Some of you will find letters from, and it's the packets that we gave, and the parents. I don't see much talent here, and you don't deserve to wear them. We've listened to you, and you're not state material. And you're sloppy and you need work. And if I stood in front of you and said that to you day and a day out, how would you perform in area? Our students have been convinced for months that they're not worthy. They've reached out to their faculty, many. We've, many parents have encouraged, go up, go express, share your feedback. And the results of some of that were that they were locked out of their band hall on a rainy Monday morning. And a member of our school admin had to let them in. Our high school band program has been on a projection of growth for the last three years as our retention rates in junior high have continued to rise. Change is hard. And while we had changed last year, we saw a twenty-eight percent reduction in our high school band and the number of students in it. It was going to be sixty-five. But many students were convinced to stay, stick it out, and try. And what has resulted? Our students have struggled with their mental health. They have felt defeated. They have felt unlistened to, and they are worn out. When I voted yes for our kids last year, I knew that next year, we were projected to have a hundred and twenty students in our band program. And I wanted them to have a facility that they were proud to be in. And I would be shocked if you don't have less next year than you did this year, which again was fifty-nine. We were projected to have a hundred and twenty. Many of our students have said that they haven't learned anything new. They are criticized and humiliated in front of their friends, but they are not taught how to correct what they have done wrong. When members of our staff do try to teach them, they are told to hurry up and finish. And when they have a hard time learning a part in a show, it's just removed. While it was published in our newspaper and online that our program received ones and made finals at every competition, that is a stretch of the truth. While we did make some ones, we also made some twos. And we absolutely did not make finals at every competition. And though it sounds great to say that we came in second, what if I told you there were only two, three A bands at a competition primarily hosting two A schools? So second was last in our division. The total, our competition took place on the same day as the Mount Pleasant competition. The Mount Pleasant competition, whereas our district competes the week before, we are also supposed to be competing in UIL. When we were asked why we were passing up the opportunity to march with our competition on the same field that we would be competing on for UIL, we were told that they wanted to expose our kids to other schools and other fields. He wanted them to see other programs. And unfortunately, that opportunity was taken by competing primarily at schools hosting two A programs. While adding exposure is welcome and should, should not be on the week before UIL competition, our final opportunity to make tweaks before with our competition. As you look at the three A competition over the last few years, each year Area C makes up forty to fifty percent of the state finalists. I think you'll actually find that for the last fifteen years I've been here through. Forty to fifty percent. And four of the ten of the finalists come from our district. Of the criticism the judges gave us, there were seventeen very detailed criticisms we got in area. How much time do I have?
You're past the mark.
You're thirty, young lady. Thank you, Ms. Young.
The rest of the speech is in here.
Okay.
As well as letters from our students, from our faculty, from our parents.
Okay, we will go over this. Appreciate you, Ms. Young. All right. Next item, item six, consider approval of the consent agenda. There are more books here. Any questions for Dr. McCullough on the consent agenda? Is there anything in here that you need to talk about? Is that just taking about information items? Okay, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Motion made.
That's made by Josh. Seconded by Linda. Any further questions? All four. Thirty-six, four on that. Action items, the first item is consider approval of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four emergency operations plan update.
I put the update in your emergency operations plan update in your board book for this year. I had a safety meeting last week, just a couple of things that were changed. In the operations plan itself, just had some name changes, had a little bit of personnel change. Have to make some more, not made, since we've not fulfilled Max's position yet. Once we do that, we'll change that out as well. One change, we had a hazard analysis tool. Went through that with the group, made a couple of changes in regard to the active shooter score, cyber attack ransomware, highway accident hazmat. Those are the main changes in the hazard analysis tool. The rest of the emergency operations plan itself pretty much states the same. I do want to give you a little bit of update of what I shared with, with the safety committee at the meeting. Where everybody else is here should know what that is as well. Couple of safety security updates that we have taken care of so far. That was, come pay forward through our first safety grant that we received. And we just got the notification that we've received, the second one that we'll begin working on. Now I'll give you more information on that as well. But what we did with, with the safety security updates so far, we've replaced the fencing at the both elementary playgrounds with non-scalable fencings. We have put up the Knox boxes at each one of the entrances to the buildings as required. We're still in the process of getting the window film. I think you have a Bobby, that's supposed to be taking place here within the next couple of weeks. We had hired three officers. Max, of course, as you know, is retired. And Officer Sandoval, today was his last day as he has taken a position as the chief of police at Yanis ISD, which is where he's from and is where his kids go to school as well. So we have, we interviewed last week. We're in the process of doing background checks and finalizing the part on that. And I'll probably ask you as a board to see if we could have a special get together to try to hire that person as soon as we finish all the background checks with, with him. We also are in the process of getting a program for each one of our staff members. It's from a company called Sentegix. What it is, I kind of consider it kind of a fallen and can't get up card. But it'd be a card like this right here that each one of our staff members will have that when there's an incident, that they need to help, or when there's an emergency, they'll push that. And that will notify us where that is taking place. And it's not a static location as our Raptor technology is, such as if I'm, if I'm teaching in the sixth grade classroom and I have an issue there, when I click it, it will show my issues in for the administration, I'm in that classroom. If I'm out on the playground, if I, there's an active shooter or somebody's driving up there, an incident out there, as a teacher, I can, I will click the same thing, and it will notify that I'm outside now, not still in the classroom, which the other one was. We also along with that, we had a meeting with our sheriff's department. Ricky brought a company called Mutual Link that we're looking at. And I'll be getting more information for you on that as well as we look to move forward with this. What Mutual Link will do is it'll work with our Sentegix buttons. And when it connects, if there's an issue, as soon as that teacher or staff member pushes the button, it will allow the nine-one-one dispatch and the officers to have access to our video cameras. So if there's a, if there is an incident taking place, it will give them real time action of where it is. So they're getting, they're seeing that as they're coming on, or the nine-one-one dispatch will be able to share with them, there's an incident in the sixth grade hallway, you know, at the third door or whatever. So they'll, and they'll have eyes on the incident at that time. Ricky is working on some funding there as well. Mutual Link has grant writers, and because of other safety money that's out there, we believe this first year they'll install, it'll be a pilot project. They'll be working on grant funding for us to do a three-year project with that. And if that takes place, we will have that. And if the grant funding, or if that grant funding does not come through, then we will look at some other means to do. But I think it'll be a great benefit of what we have, an enhancement to our safety program. And so I'm gonna share that as well of just some of the safety.
You're talking about in the first.
Shoulders. Then the first three.
Okay.
So if, again, if the grant funding comes through, which is what we're working on, we're working with Mutual Link and their grant writers to make that happen. We just want to give you an update on that. So at this time, that's a little more than, than just the emergency operations plan, but I will share that with you. But if you would, I would ask that you would approve the, the minor updates to the emergency operation plan, twenty-three, twenty-four emergency operation plan.
Okay. At this time, I'm making a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four emergency operations plan update. Do we have a second? Second must go. Any further discussion? All four. So, I'll be on their action items. Nominate candidates. Candidates serve as the board of directors for the Franklin County Appraisal District. We get five, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And if you go to that action item on your, if you have it on your computer, on your list here.
So the district, we have two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven total votes that we, we get to vote for five people.
Anybody want to make some nominations? Okay.
Someone made Roger, Austin, Mike, Ralph, and Chad.
Okay. Roger, Austin. Roger, did you hear?
Austin, Curry, Mike Brambling, Ralph Robertson, and Chad.
Okay. Do we, let's see, that's an action item. We, we need to work. Y'all are okay with that? We need a second before we go on to discussion. I second that. Do, anybody have a question on those five nominees? We get how many? Two, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven votes?
Two of them get five hundred and ninety-two votes, three of them get five hundred and ninety-one votes.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All right. So, off for Roger, Austin, Ralph, Chad, and Mike. Six, seven. Those will be our nominees for the Franklin County Appraisal District. Moving along here, discussion items, discussion of Senate Bill seven sixty-three, end school policy to authorize the district to employ or accept the volunteers chaplain under Education Code forty-three.
So in our past legislative session, Senate Bill seven sixty-three requires schools before March first. And that's why this is just a discussion item tonight, because we've not talked about this before. But I want to provide you with some information. Requires schools to, to take a record vote on whether to adopt a policy authorizing the campus of the district to employ or accept as a volunteer a chaplain under Education Code twenty-three. So I've, I've provided you a little bit of information. One I've provided for you was some information from a group called Texas Impact. That group has given some information, kind of the pros and cons. You know, we, we do not, we do not have a local DP policy right now, which is something with the update one twenty-two, you know, one twenty-two, update one twenty-two? That's just come out from TASB that we'll look at. But what that, what that will have us do is, is a part of this right here, decide whether or not we want to. I think it's some things that we have to look at. Our board attorney, Lamont Scherer, we kind of talked to him a little bit about it as well. Couple of different things, you know, on. Couple of different things, you know, on, I'd say on the surface, it looks like, you know, why would you not have a chaplain be a part of the school? But I think that there's more that's going to go into that. I think if that is something we want to do, even to use a volunteer for counseling services, then I think that we're going to have to take a look in regard to several different pieces, such as, are, is it going to be a certain denomination? What are the, what are the guidelines or things that they're going to have to follow? What are the, what are the credentials that they're going to have to hold? You know, currently what we do, if there's an emergency, what we currently do, I'm going to go back and use what we would do, I'm going to use Mount Pleasant's bus accident they had from several years ago. You know, when, when a school has an accident like that, surrounding schools help send their counselors to provide some additional assistance to those schools during that time. We think Service Center does the same thing, as well at different times, we would also, I mean, we would, something like that right there. I know that area churches would, you know, the pastors would offer their services to come and counsel during that time as well. So I think there's several things for us to take into consideration. Again, I've provided you with some information, I'll answer what questions I can, if you have some tonight, again, it's not an action item. I just wanted to bring it before you, let you, get you to start thinking about it. And I'll continue to try to give more information for you as well, if you have specific questions in regard to that.
When'd you say that would be?
We have to make, have to have a vote before March first, so again, we can put it on a separate board meeting if we'd like to, or even January. But again, I just wanted to put it before you, let you know something that you do have to consider. Again, giving you some information, I'll get you some more in regard to what we want to, how we want to write that local policy.
Okay.
Any certain questions, anything you specifically think would be important? If you think about it, again, please, please let me know. If you have a question that comes up, I'd be glad to get that information and share it with you.
Okay.
Okay?
Six twenty-eight P M, the Board will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following sessions of the Texas Openings Act, five five one oh seven three, five five one oh seven one, and five five one oh seven four. Thirty-eight.
Edition on.
You good, Sharon?
Eight twenty.
Eight twenty in the P M, Board convenes back in open session. At this time, Dr. McCullough, do we have any nominations or?
Have a one professional contract, I want to present to the Board Nathan Morgan, eighth grade social studies teacher. His information there is in your packet, he'll be replacing Lindsay Greenberg. So that's a recommendation.
Any questions on Nathan Morgan? So any action act on that, correct, please? All right, at this time, I make a motion to exempt Nathan Morgan, do I have a second?
Sir.
By Scott, second by Scott. Any further discussion? All four. Six of them, Nathan Morgan, nominations?
We do have a couple to acknowledge. Max Kanday, Police Chief, Jesus Sandoval, Police Officer, Michael Jaco, Maintenance Transportation, Cynthia Sprouse, Captain Middle School Cafeteria Worker, Rhanna Shires, Elementary Special A D, and Lindsay Greenberg, Middle School Social Studies Teacher. No action needed.
Okay. Any further additions from the Board? Eight twenty-one P M, meeting adjourned.
Eight twenty-one.